And whereas together we can forge women's equality collectively, we can all embrace equity to celebrate women's achievement, raise awareness about discrimination, and take action. Thank you. And take action to drive gender parity. And whereas when we embrace equity, we embrace diversity and we embrace inclusion. We embrace equity to forge harmony and unity and to drive success for all.
And whereas equality is the goal and equity is the means to get there. Through equity, we can reach equality. And whereas we acknowledge that the women's movement has historically left out Black, Indigenous, transgender, and women of color. And whereas we choose to reflect on these movements and challenge the narrative going forward.
Whereas we continue to face multiple pandemics caused by the coronavirus, racism, and violence, and BIPOC women are disproportionately impacted as they stand at the intersection of compounding barriers. And whereas the Women of Minneapolis Employee Network, WEM, will celebrate Women's History Month with events throughout the month that choose to embrace equity and celebrate Black, Indigenous, transgender, and women of color by centering our events on their words and perspectives. And whereas all city employees are invited to embrace equity with women in order to begin building a better and more equitable city enterprise.
And whereas women employees make up approximately 31% of the City of Minneapolis workforce, and whereas the City of Minneapolis leadership strives to create an organization where women, especially Black, Indigenous, transgender, and women of color are equitably represented and thriving across departments and roles. And whereas to support women in the City of Minneapolis enterprise, women, am I repeating myself? No, okay. WEM was formed in 2017 as an employee resource group and those interested in the advancement and empowerment of female employees.
Yeah. Whereas WEM envisions a working environment in which women employees are informed, empowered, and confident in their access to the resources they need to accelerate their careers. And whereas all women are leaders, regardless of their formal role or leadership position.
Whereas WEM offers city employee circles for peer support, networking opportunities, a newsletter, and a policy resource group. And whereas WEM will continue offering the City of Minneapolis recommendations on action steps to support women employees in the city's workforce and develop the diverse voices and needs in city initiatives.
Now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and city council do hereby commemorate the achievements of women and their role in the development and history of the region and the nation. And we join in recognizing the annual celebration of Women's History Month. Congratulations to all the women in the room. Will the Women of Women please come and take a photograph with us? The Women of Women. Thanks, everyone. Thank you, everyone. That was quite exciting. And now I will ask the clerk to call the roll to verify the presence of a quorum.
Councilmember Chavez.
Present.
Councilmember Ellison.
Here.
Councilmember Vitah.
Present.
Councilmember Rainville.
Present.
Councilmember Goodman.
Present.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Present.
Councilmember Johnson.
Present.
Councilmember Osman.
Present.
Councilmember Payne.
Present.
Councilmember Kosky.
Present.
Councilmember Shugtai.
Present.
Councilmember, our Vice President Palmasano.
Present.
President Jenkins.
Present.
There are 13 members present.
Thank you. And let the record reflect that we do have a quorum. Next, we have the adoption of our agenda. Colleagues, the agenda for today's meeting is before us. And I'll ask if there are any amendments to that agenda. Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitah.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Payne.
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Shugtai.
Aye.
Vice President Palmasano.
Aye.
President Jenkins.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries and the agenda is adopted. Next item of business is the acceptance of minutes from our regular meeting on February 23rd. May I have a motion to accept those minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitah.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Payne.
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Shugtai.
Aye.
Vice President Palmasano.
Aye.
President Jenkins.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
Those minutes have been accepted. And finally, we have the referrals of petitions, communications, and reports to the proper committees. May I have that motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitah.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Payne.
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Shugtai.
Aye.
Vice President Palmasano.
Aye.
President Jenkins.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries and those reports are being referred. Next order of business is a report from our standing committees, beginning with the report from the Business Inspections, Housing and Zoning Committee. And the report will be presented by the committee's chair, Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. Members of the council, the Business Inspections, Housing and Zoning Committee is bringing 17 items forward for approval this morning. Item number one is a license for Beludo in Ward 10. Item number two is Broken Clock Brewing Collective moving to have an outdoor sidewalk cafe as well as a license in the third ward. Item number three is going to be deleted from the agenda, so the motion will be to delete from the agenda. Item number four is granting an appeal. This is an appeal for Spy House Coffee so that they can have a little bit more coffee in their production and office space. Item number five are the liquor license approvals and six are the renewals. Item seven is amending the license fee schedule as it pertains to tow truck service fees. Item eight is the workforce development appointments. Item nine is a grant application to the state for youth employment and training services. Item 10 is the Fall Brownfield Grant from Deed. These are accepting a number of grants mainly for affordable housing projects in the city. Item number 11 is the Met Council's Livable Community Grant Awards, again, accepting grants for housing projects and some commercial projects throughout the city. Item number 12 is an amendment to the ESG supplemental funding rapid rehousing recommendations. These are recommendations and a joint powers agreement. Item number 13 is a rezoning for Tim Baylor's project up at 18th and Bryant Avenue North. Item 14 is a rezoning on Marshall Street. Item 15 is an alley vacation between Chicago and Elliott Avenues south of 54th. Item 16 is an alley vacation for North Loop Partners. And item number 17 is a great streets financing gap loan of about a half a million dollars for a project at 38th and Chicago. With that, I will move all items, Madam President, noting again that item three, the motion is to remove this item from the agenda.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. And I see Councilmember Wonsley in queue.
Thank you, President Jenkins. So I just want to make a comment on item seven, which is tow truck service fees. I want to name that, you know, and we've gotten contact with our constituents regarding this, but I know towing can be a huge financial burden on working class people and often it disproportionately impacts residents of colors and renters. Just as of 2021, more than 30% of adults could not cover a $400 emergency. Our towing rates are now approaching $300. So I know the level of disruption that can, you know, cause in someone's life from getting towed is really serious. So I will be voting to abstain on this item today, but really look forward to working with my colleagues and also city staff to see how we can, you know, figure out ways to help reduce that disruption and ultimately that financial burden that can really create a very downward spiral for working class people. So I just wanted to name that.
Thank you, Councilmember Wonsley. Councilmember Goodman has moved the committee's report and minus item number three.
Which we're removing to, moving to delete from the agenda officially.
From the agenda. Thank you. And is there any other comments? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Chavez.
No on seven, yes on the rest.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitah.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye on all except seven, which I abstain.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Payne.
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Shugtai.
Aye.
Vice President Palmasano.
Aye.
President Jenkins.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes on the report except for item number seven, which has 11 ayes, one nay, and one abstention.
That carries and that report is adopted. The next report is from the Intergovernmental Relations Committee to be presented by the committee's chair, Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Madam President. The Intergovernmental Relations Committee is bringing forward three items today. The first is a passage of resolution, support for the University of Minnesota Graduate Labor Union. The second item is a series of four amendments to the 2023 legislative agenda and policy positions. And the third item is amending the federal legislative agenda. I will note that we did have extensive conversation at committee on items two, three, and two, four. And so if any colleagues wish to have further conversation on that, my suggestion would be to pull those and move the rest of the report. But otherwise, I will go ahead and move approval of all of these items. Thank you.
Councilmember Johnson has moved the committee's report. Is there any discussion? I see Councilmember Wonsley in queue.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to, as Councilmember Johnson, raise just a motion for roll call vote for items 2.3 and 2.4, so to pull those.
So Councilmember Wonsley has pulled items 2.2 and 2.3.
2.3, sorry.
2.3 and 2.4. My apologies. Is there any further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll, noting that we are pulling items 2.3 and 2.4.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Point of clarification, I'm, we're voting on 2.3 and 2.4 at the moment. That's what it says in the, okay, cool. Sorry. Oh, I see. Acceptance. Sorry, I missed that. Aye.
Councilmember Vitah.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Payne.
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Shugtai.
Aye.
Vice President Palmasano.
Aye.
President Jenkins.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries and that report is adopted. Next, we have discussions on items 2.3 and 2.4. And I will call on Councilmember Wonsley.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to motion for this to be roll call vote.
All right. Is there any further discussion on items 2.3 and 2.4? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember.
Taking these all together or?
Madam President, that's at your discretion. Are we taking one at a time or are we doing both of them together?
Let's do one at a time, starting with item 2.3. Clerk, please call the roll.
No.
There is no discussion in this meeting. That is our city council rules that, yeah, we're not going to change it today. So, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Chavez.
Sir, please let us complete our business today.
Councilmember Chavez.
No.
Councilmember Ellison.
No.
Councilmember Vitah.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Nay.
Councilmember Johnson.
Nope.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Payne.
No.
Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Shugtai.
No.
Vice President Palmasano.
Aye.
President Jenkins.
Aye.
There are seven ayes and six nays.
That carries and our next item is item 2.4, amending the legislative agenda and policy positions to support legislation that would provide for the safety of public officials and employees. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Wonsley.
Thank you, Madam President. So I just wanted to share, since I've had constituents reach out about this too, that, you know, I believe many of our colleagues have expressed agreed upon sentiment that violence is never okay and no one up here on this dais believes that threats. that violence is never okay and no one up here on this dais believes that threats against elected officials are okay. Um, that being said, I do want to note again, you know, the concerns or motivations behind these amendments, um, do not move us closer towards addressing the safety concerns that were initially guiding our conversations. Um, I appreciate the suggestion that Councilmember, uh, Johnson raised on Tuesday at our IGR meeting that we do have tools that we have and have not utilized to ensure that, you know, our elected officials do feel safe. Um, I will also say that these amendments are a completely predictable response to mass protests that we typically see from Republicans, and I'm, I'm actually disappointed to see it come from my colleagues. There are serious conversations that, again, we can have about the safety of our elected officials and open to seeing council leadership move us forward and having a democratic dialogue and plan for mapping that out with what we have. Um, and instead of having that conversation, um, I'm seeing some council members conflate the protests that have happened here, um, specifically in the, the last council meeting with January sixth or other right-wing racist protests, and it's very dangerous to conflate the two. It's dangerous, and it's a dangerous line of rhetoric when we conflate Black and Indigenous residents' genuine and justified fear about a harmful city-led project with extreme violence. I also want to name that that's exactly where this is going around the country, from the Dakota Access Pipeline protests to the Stop Cop City protests in Atlanta. There have been increased criminal penalties that are being used as a tool of retribution by the state. People protesting environmental destruction are being charged with domestic terrorism. Uh, Black Lives Matter have also, uh, well, members of that and protesters, part of that movement, have also been recipients of inflated criminal charges. And the political motivations behind enhancing criminal penalties for people who engage in civil disobedience is to ultimately scare them away from standing up for their basic human rights. All criminalization has done, and there is decades of evidence to back this up, is that it has, the consequence of sending more Black and Brown and Indigenous people to prison, and it erodes several liberties for those communities and all the masses that we want to participate in our democracy. And I'm nervous that that's the direction that these amendments will be moving us forward, um, today, and that is why I won't be supporting them.
Let's remember Palmasano.
Thank you. My Second Amendment, this item two point four is important because people doing the work of our, of the public in all forms have increasing exposure in our world, not because of who they are, not because they're somehow special, but because they represent an institution of government as they walk around our world, because they go home and have families. This is not about being left-wing or right-wing. This should be apolitical. We've made it clear that they deserve protections while conducting their business, but increasingly, people are being targeted at home, in the Skyway, in the apartment elevators. We need, as a body, to take a collective stand, and this is one way to do that. We ask the state to help us as we continue to diversify our employee work to include matters of public safety. Housing inspectors, public works employees, reg services employees, they all are facing increased danger as they walk around our world. This statement, whether it's acted on by the state or whether it helps to start a conversation with the League of Minnesota Cities across our state, this is important, and this will benefit everyone in our community. I feel we need to advocate for the safety of everyone who is serving the city. This is not about protest and it's not about free speech. It, it is about the assaults and threats of violence, and anything less is unacceptable. Thank you.
Sir, please. I'm gonna have to ask you to be removed if you continue to disrupt this meeting. Um, Councilmember Osman.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Uh, on Tuesday, I didn't have the opportunity or I didn't speak out. Again, so what happened, uh, some of my colleagues, uh, I do wanna say I'm sorry. What happened to you, you don't deserve it. You come here to do your work, to do, to serve the resident that you care about. And I do wanna thank Council Vice President for bringing this forward. Uh, we need to be able to, uh, do the business with safe. People have children, people have families, and for them to get, getting threats or be, even being attacked and, uh, just go on a lunch, it's, it's not acceptable. And I strongly, uh, condemn that. Um, I wanna make sure that we all in this together, and, um, I voted different way, but I have your back. I understand what you went through. And, um, and I'm sorry for, you know, I'm not someone who's active on social media, anything like that. I learned the news of my colleagues have been threatening, and I seen the messages, some of them that I talked to, uh, private messages, uh, public messages that have been posted on social media. This is not acceptable. Uh, it's not acceptable. If one of us is attacked, all of us are attacked. So, um, thank you so much, and, um, I will be favorable for, for this. Thank you.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Madam President. And I know this gets talked about as, uh, related to Roof Depot. Um, let's just be really clear about that, but I will say I have never received a threat by anyone related to Roof Depot. I know some of my colleagues have. I will say the threats I've received have exclusively been from extreme right-wing individuals who have made terroristic threats, white supremacists who have threatened to assassinate me, who have threatened to kill me. And so when I'm looking at this vote today, I am thinking about those individuals making those threats and how unacceptable that is, and I'm thinking that any threat, no matter who it comes from, is unacceptable, uh, to elected officials. And it doesn't just impact us, it impacts neighbors, it impacts families. I'll just share for a moment an experience I had, which, and, and it's pretty publicly known, you know, that, uh, my youngest child was in the NICU for six weeks. And this is the hardest moment that my family has ever gone through, the most stressful moments of my life, which is saying a lot, uh, with everything we've been through. And, you know, my wife and I would split, uh, our time in the NICU. She would stay there overnight, and so I would come home immediately after being in the NICU and then pick up, uh, my oldest, a three-and-a-half-year-old from daycare, and then come home and watch him. And during that time, we all received a threat of somebody coming after us with an AR-15 and planting pipe bombs around our house. So after going to the NICU during the day and worrying about my baby who was struggling to breathe, I would have to come home, keep my three-and-a-half-year-old in the car while I searched around the perimeter of our house for pipe bombs. So these have an effect on our families. These have an effect on whether people even run for office in the first place. It has a consequence for democracy, and we should have zero tolerance towards any threats of violence or actual violence that is, let's be very clear, done to influence policy decisions. And I also wanna speak to the fact that this would be standing up for our employees because our employees are oftentimes in vulnerable positions as well when doing the work of the city. And we see right now there's state laws that elevate protections, for instance, for bus drivers and for firefighters, and I don't see why that shouldn't also apply, for instance, to our housing inspectors or folks in regulatory services or other positions throughout the city enterprise. And we've heard from our employees that concerns around their safety has a real impact on morale and on people's decisions over whether or not to work for the city. And at a time when we're struggling with those issues and recruitment and retention, this matters, and we should listen to our employees around this, and we heard loud and clear through their representatives that they support this. So I'm glad we're bringing this forward. I'm glad this passed a committee, and I appreciate my colleagues', uh, support on this. Thank you.
Councilmember. Man, please.
If people, people, if people are gonna, please let us proceed with this meeting. I am happy to have a conversation with anybody after this meeting. I, I am more than happy to have a conversation with anybody. I am doing my job, actually. I, I am voting no on both of these items. I'm happy to have a conversation with you guys after the council meeting ends, and I'm happy to have that conversation. If this, if this were to pass today, we can have a conversation with the state legislature making this change, and the public will have the opportunity to make testimony on this ordinance.
Sir, you are out of order. Sir, you are out of order.
Point order, Madam Chair.
Councilmember Rainville. Councilmember Ellison.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. I can't support increased incriminalization of any kind. I think that we're, I do think, I do, I do wanna say that it's important that, um, we be in a position, it's important that we listen, that's true, but it's important that we also be in a position to complete the, complete the business before us, and, and that we do so transparently. And when we do have these disruptions, and I'm not trying to scold you guys at all, but when we do have these disruptions, it doesn't prevent the vote, the votes from happening. But, but what I want, but my main point is, is that increased criminalization is, to, in my mind, not the pathway to safety for people on this dais. It's not the pathway to safety for people at the state or in the federal government. Increased criminal penalties? That's what we're talking about here, right? I've faced as many threats as anybody up on this dais. I don't condone it, and I don't, I don't, uh, and I don't, you know, I don't think any of us should condone it, but I don't think that increased criminalization has ever been an effective solution, uh, to threats. It won't increase safety. It might make us feel good today, and if the state legislator takes us up on this plea, uh, sure, we're gonna, we're gonna criminalize some folks and we're gonna see the law applied, uh, in a very inequitable way. But it doesn't increase safety. It won't today. It won't if the state legislature acts, uh, and so that's why I'm not gonna be supporting this.
Councilmember Rainville.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanna repeat what I said, uh, on Tuesday at the committee hold. This should be a thirteen-o vote. It should show support for our city staff and their protection, and it should show the, the common courtesy we should have towards each other. None of us should ever allow any of us to be, uh, attacked. Uh, Councilmember Osman, you're very, very true. Uh, what you said was very, very true. An attack on one is an attack on all. Thank you.
Please. Can we please remove this gentleman from this, uh, meeting? Yes, sir. That's why we're having you removed. So I, I put myself in queue. And I will be abstaining from this vote today. I do not support increased criminalization. However, we have to have decorum and ability to do our jobs. There is already penalties. Somebody said civil disobedience. There is a consequence for civil disobedience. So if you wanna break the rules, there are consequences. That said, seeing no other discussion, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Chavez.
No.
Councilmember Ellison.
No.
Councilmember Vitale.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman is absent. Councilmember Wonsley.
Nay.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Payne.
Nay.
Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Shugtai.
Nay.
Vice President Palmasano.
Aye.
President Jenkins.
Abstain.
There are six ayes, five nays, and one abstention.
Madam President. Sorry, hand this restroom. I'd like to be recorded as voting aye.
Thank you. Clerk, can you?
If there are no objections.
Without objections from my colleagues? I don't see any objections from my colleagues. Um, colleagues, while our council president takes a brief break, um, we'll continue forward. Next, we have the report from our Policy and Government Oversight Committee. That report will be presented by its chair, Councilmember Ellison.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. The Policy and Government Oversight Committee is bringing forward nineteen items that it is recommending for approval. One is passage of a resolution for a gift acceptance for the National Association of County and City Health Officials of Travel and Lodging Expenses. Two is passage of a resolution for a gift acceptance from Amplio Economic Development Corporation for Travel and Lodging Expenses. Three is passage of a resolution for a gift acceptance from Rank Choice Voting Resource Center for Travel, Lodging, and Meals. Four is passage of a resolution establishing the 2023 Local Board of Appeal and Equalization. Five is amending the 2023 General Appropriation Resolution, decreasing the racial equity, inclusion, and belonging appropriation, increasing the community planning and economic development appropriation. Six is accepting a bid for Ramp A Escalator Removal. Seven is accepting a bid for refuse Packer Bodies and Tipper Assemblies. Eight is accepting a bid for the Upper Harbor Terminal, uh, lower Dowling Avenue, Thirty-third Avenue, and West River Road Construction Project. Nine is authorizing contract with Short Elliott Hendrickson, Inc. for engineering and design services for Nicollet Ave- Avenue Street construction and bridge reconstruction. Ten is authorizing contract with Restorative Justice Community Action for Restorative Justice Services. Eleven, authorizing contract amendment with Tetra Tech, Inc. for National Incident Management Systems Reset Exercises. Twelve is authorizing contract amendment with the Urban Design Perspectives for Continuing Work on the Climate Equity Plan. Thirteen is authorizing contract amendment with Stentec, Inc. for Engineering and Design Services for the Upper Harbor Terminal Project. Fourteen is authorizing contract amendment with Deloitte Consulting LLP for Nat for Additional Compensation Consulting Services. Fifteen is authorizing contract amendments with organizations providing services under the Minneapolis Strategic Outreach Initiative, um, with item one, uh, under fifteen, um, being moved for deletion. Uh, item sixteen is authorizing a contract amendment with various artists for the John Biggers Seed, uh, Public Seed Public Art Project. And item seventeen is authorizing contract with National Forum for Public Black Administrators for a recruitment table. With that, I'll move approval of all items except item 15.1, which I'll be moving to delete from the agenda. And then we have two additional items that were a part of POGO that we'll be discharging later in the meeting.
Thank you for noting that. Councilmember Ellison has moved approval of the committee's report. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Wansley.
Thank you, Council Vice President. I would like to pull item sixteen for a separate vote.
Thank you. Councilmember Wansley is pulling item number sixteen. Is there anything else? Clerk, please call the roll on the balance of that.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitale.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Wansley.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Payne.
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Shugtai.
Aye.
Vice President Palmasano.
Aye.
There are twelve ayes.
Thank you. Those items are adopted. Back to item number sixteen. Councilmember Wansley, did you want to speak to that first?
I believe Councilmember Ellison is in Q to speak to that.
Councilmember Ellison.
Yeah, happy to speak to it. I'm included in item sixteen, and I haven't gone too deep into the details. I hope they're not giving me more money. I don't need it. I finished my project back in 2015, I think it was. But this is a part of the John Biggers Seed Project. I was one of the artists on that project years ago, and I'm really excited to see the project being completed. I think it's going to be going up in my ward, actually. But because I'm one of the artists on the project, and this is an amendment to those contracts, I have to abstain from this item. So thanks to Councilmember Wansley for pulling this item.
Thank you. Paying our artist community in a timely way is extremely important. I hope it's not for that. But without anyone else in Q, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Abstain.
Councilmember Vitale.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Wansley.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Payne.
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Shugtai.
Aye.
Vice President Palmasano.
Aye.
There are eleven ayes and one abstention.
Thank you. Our Public Health and Safety Committee report is next, which will be presented by its chair, Councilmember Vitale.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. The Public Health and Safety Committee is bringing forward ten items. Item one is authorizing the submission of a grant application to the Centers for Disease and Control for the New Racial and Ethnic Approaches to Community Health Grant. Item two is accepting a donation from the Federal Bureau of Investigations for travel expenses for Police Sergeant Thomas, subject to attend a recertification training course. Item three is accepting a donation from the Association of Threat Assessment Professionals for travel expenses for Police Sergeant Dean Kriegel to attend their 2023 Winter Conference. Item four is accepting a donation from the East Lake Isles residents for purchase of fixed camera for public safety purposes. Item five is accepting a grant from Minnesota Homeland Security in Emergency Management for police bomb disposal equipment and training. Item six is authorizing a revenue contract with SMG to provide law enforcement equipment at US Bank Stadium. Item seven is authorizing a revenue contract with SMG for bomb detection services at US Bank Stadium. Item eight is authorizing a revenue contract with SMG for SWAT security services at US Bank Stadium. Item nine is approving appointments to the Minneapolis Advisory Committee on Aging. Item ten is adopting the Minneapolis Food Vision, and I'll move for approval of these items.
Thank you, Councilmember Vitale. Councilmember Vitale has moved this committee's report. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Chavez.
Yeah, Council President Jenkins, I have a few questions for our city clerk, and maybe some clarifications on items number two, three, and four. I sit on the POGO committee, which is where gift acceptancees usually go. I just wonder if you can walk the city council right now through the process of why these are now going to PHS?
Madam President, to Councilmember's inquiry, I don't have any certitude around that because I haven't reviewed those items. Typically, items go through POGO when the matter has been processed through our finance department. So when procurement or the finance office handles it, that sort of is the de facto move to the POGO committee. When it's handled by the police department, for example, then it would go through the Public Health and Safety Committee, which is the oversight committee for the police department. So it's a matter of which department originates and handles the process of submitting it.
So for clarification, if there's like some housing stipend or housing-related thing, the gift acceptance would go to the biz committee?
Through the president, it could. There are no hard and fast rules on that. Typically, if a department claims sort of ownership, and they apply for the grant, and they shepherd the process through, and they submit it, it's going through that department's home committee. Many departments work through the procurement department, which then takes the lead. And when the procurement department takes the lead, it defaults to POGO, because that's where this body and establishing its committees has said they want matters from the finance department, and specifically the purchasing or procurement division of that department to go.
Understood. It still feels like these should be going to POGO. And then I have a question on number three. The date of the conference shows February 6th to 11th. This is over a month ago, so I don't know if you can... Someone can walk me through and explain why we authorize trips before accepting the trips?
Madam President, to Councilmember Chavez's question, I don't know the answer to that question, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ellison.
Just real quick, wanted to try to answer that first question, and the clerks can feel free to jump in. I think increasingly, in the past, our committees have been very department-based. This department goes to that committee, and this department goes to that committee. And I think increasingly, our agendas are becoming a lot more topic-based, and I think that that is maybe there's some kind of some fluidity in that transition, and so maybe that kind of helps explain things a little bit. But I do think that often when I've got some questions about which item is appropriate and which committee, the clerks have been super helpful in helping me navigate that. So just wanted to offer that.
Madam President, the only thing I would add to that is, we, to the extent that council members maybe are not aware, there have been discussions, as Councilmember Ellison just explained, in the past, departments had home committees to which they reported. In our new government structure, as we consider the formation of council and council standing committees, it feels like it's much more policy-driven or subject matter-driven. And that is something that, as we organize in the future, the leadership and body should probably take into consideration. This body formed very early in January, and we followed the longstanding tradition of assigning departments to home committees. So that partly explains that answer.
No, thank you, Mr. Clerk. And to that end, we will be reviewing our committee structures to ensure that we are hosting the correct topics and issues in the proper committees, which may mean expanding committees and/or creating new committees, but we are having some, I think, times where we need clarification around.
I also would add to that, Council President, the motion that was brought last cycle by Councilwoman Wansley and Council Vice President Palmasano about the legislative department and reviewing our legislative process and things of that nature certainly would encompass issues about how the council structures its standing committees. So I think more to come on that.
Thank you. Seeing no further discussion, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitale.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Wansley.
Aye, on all except number four.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Payne.
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Shugtai.
Aye.
Vice President Palmasano.
Aye.
President Jenkins.
Aye.
There are thirteen ayes in the report except for item number four, which has twelve ayes and one nay.
Thank you. That report carries, and our next report is from the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee, and it will be presented by the Chair, Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Madam President. The Public Works and Infrastructure Committee brings eight items forward. The first is the Forty-S sixth Avenue Street Resurfacing Project, and that's a project approval and assessments. The second item is the Minnehaha Residential Street Resurfacing Project Approval and Assessments. The third item is the Park Avenue South Street Resurfacing Project Approval and Assessments. Item number four is the Hennepin Avenue South Streetscape Project Approval and Assessments. Item number five is the Mill District Street Resurfacing Project Designation, Cost Estimates, and Setting of a Public Hearing. Item number six is updates to the Parking and Mobility Service Fee and Race Schedule. Item number seven is Upper Harbor Terminal Construction of Public Infrastructure Improvements in District Stormwater System. And item number eight is adopting the Minneapolis Racial Equity Framework for Transportation. I will go ahead and move all of those items on the report.
Thank you, Chair Johnson. Chair Johnson has moved this committee's report. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to make a quick comment on item number seven. Could I do that now?
Yes, please.
Thank you. I just didn't want to let the moment go by to note that we're accepting $9 million from the state of Minnesota in order to begin the infrastructure process and project at the Upper Harbor Terminal. So this will assist us in making sure our stormwater management system is built out in this location, which has been a big impediment to development over a long period of time. Very sensitive location, on the Mississippi River, essentially, and accepting this grant and moving forward with our partners at the Mississippi Watershed Management Organization, as well as the Park and Recreation Board, is a major step forward on a priority project that has been a priority in the city for almost the entire time I have served since the lock and dam shut down in that location. So $9 million grant from the state, that is something to celebrate, especially when it has to do with putting in a stormwater management system closest to our most important natural asset.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. Any further discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitale.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman.
No on four, aye on the remainder.
Councilmember Wansley.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Payne.
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Shugtai.
Aye.
Vice President Palmasano.
Aye.
President Jenkins.
Aye.
There are thirteen ayes in the report except for item number four, which has twelve ayes and one nay.
That item carries, and next we have our introduction and referral calendar. First, pursuant to notice, Councilmembers Chavez and Payne will be introducing and giving first reading to the subject matter of an ordinance amending Title 12, the Housing Maintenance Code, to amend provisions related to the prohibition of skateboard ramps or structures, which will be referred to the Business Inspection, Housing, and Zoning Committee in the next cycle. Second, pursuant to notice, Councilmember Johnson will be introducing and giving first reading to ordinances amending three titles of the code: health and sanitation, housing, maintenance, and stormwater and sanitary sewers, to reflect amendments to code citations related to the Water and Sewer Code revision that was adopted last year, which will be referred to the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee in the next cycle. Finally, Councilmember Goodman has a motion to amend the prior introduction of the subject matter of an ordinance amending Title 20 of the zoning code related to the land use rezoning study by adding five new chapters to implement policies in conjunction with Minneapolis 2040, which will be referred to the Business Inspections Housing Zoning Committee in the next cycle. Are there any questions from colleagues regarding these introductions? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitale.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Wansley.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Payne.
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Shugtai.
Aye.
Vice President Palmasano.
Aye.
President Jenkins.
Aye.
There are thirteen ayes.
That carries those ordinance are referred to committees in the next cycle is indicated on the agenda. Next order of business is resolutions. We have two honorary resolutions that were read at the beginning of the meeting. Are there any further comments from my colleagues? Any further comments? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adopt these resolutions.
Second.
So moved.
And seconded. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitale.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Wansley.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Payne.
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Shugtai.
Aye.
Vice President Palmasano.
Aye.
President Jenkins.
Aye.
There are thirteen ayes.
That carries those resolutions have been adopted. Next, our motions by Councilmember Ellison to discharge the Policy and Government Oversight Committee from further consideration of two appointed positions in the police department: an assistant police chief and a civilian police chief of staff. Is there a second to those motions? Clerk, please call the roll.
Sorry, I wanted to...
Councilmember...
Did you have a...
Yeah, I wanted to speak... Yeah, just a little... I'm sorry. Thank you, Madam President. I was going to ask the clerks to maybe clarify the threshold needed in order for these items to pass, just for the public. I think I have a handle on it. And then, but before I get maybe that explanation from the clerks, I was just going to say, I really appreciate the presentation that we got when these first came before POGO. I had a lot of skepticism, and I don't think these were going to be positions that I was going to end up supporting. And I think that through conversations with the chief, through understanding what the source is, it's a source that's staying within the police department, it's not expanding their budget. It's their positions that, sort of, once you understand the context of the chain of command and hierarchy that exists within the police department, I think that they're positions that exist, no matter who the personnel and leadership is. But our current chief did, I think, give a good explanation and a good rationale for this. And most importantly, for my sake, these are often coming through POGO, and when I saw these positions come, I knew that there were potentially going to be more, and I kind of wanted to know where the line was, right? Are we talking about four positions? Are we talking about 12 positions? And I think that the chief did a good job of laying out the four positions that he's going to be seeking and the timeline that he'll be seeking them. So with that, I just wanted to let my colleagues know where I'm landing on these positions as somebody who started off probably in opposition. I'll be voting to support these today.
Thank you, Councilmember... Councilmember Vitale.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm just uncertain about what's about to happen in this process. Are we voting on discharging, and is this the time for me to speak about the actual motion?
I will defer to the clerk, but certainly you can speak to this motion, but I believe the motion is to discharge from the Policy Government Oversight Committee and maybe move to public safety.
Madam President, we need at least two separate motions, and I would defer to you and the body on the second, if it divides into two separate motions. Before we can act on what's listed on the agenda, one and two, the two positions, we need to discharge those. You will recall that those are still in the POGO committee, technically. And so the first motion we need to do is to discharge the POGO committee from further consideration. That requires a two-thirds vote of those who are present and participating, so with a full body here with thirteen members, we need nine affirmative votes in order to get this in front of us. Once that vote is done, assuming it carries, then both of these items are before the body. You can either act on them individually and take two separate votes, one on motion one, the assistant police chief, and a separate vote on the civilian police chief of staff, That requires a two-thirds vote of those who are present and participating. So with a full body here with 13 members, we need nine affirmative votes in order to get this in front of us. Once that vote is done, assuming it carries, then both of these items are before the body. You can either act on them individually and take two separate votes, one on Motion One, the Assistant Police Chief, and a separate vote on the Civilian Police Chief of Staff, or you could, you know, put those together. It's the body's direction. So the first vote we need is on the motion to discharge from POGO.
Thank you, Clerk Carl. Does that help? Councilmember Vitale? And so, I mean, you can comment on this motion now, or you can wait until we vote on the actual?
No, I can, I can comment now. Thank you, Madam President. I've actually prepared a written statement because this, this topic was, you know, something that I was trying to get a lot more understanding about, and I don't feel like I have. And I don't support these two positions, and I don't support them. I'll start with, you know, four months ago, when I voted for the chief, when I voted to appoint the chief, I was hopeful that he was going to come here, provide leadership, vision, and strategy to take this department forward. I have yet to see a concrete plan or strategy around how the department is going to move forward in the right direction. I've tried to get the plan multiple times in many different ways from the chief and his staff. I've talked to them in person. I've sent emails that have not been responded to, and I've requested, you know, information by phone, and I still don't understand where this department is heading. And as the Chair of Public Safety, I've gone out to meet with most, if not all, of the units in MPD, and I was shocked to still hear that the chief hasn't met with most of these people that he talks about on TV on a regular basis. And when I met with the chief in February, he had absolutely nothing positive to say about the department or about his vision for the department. And when I asked him what his biggest barriers were, he said to me that his office was in City Hall and that he didn't have a room with adequate technology for meetings. That was extremely disappointing to me. What I need is for the chief to show me the big-picture strategy, small, medium, something. Show me the goals and the vision of this department. I need stuff on paper. I need, I really do need to understand this because I'm representing a community that he goes to, you know, for these press conferences where this huge amount of violence is happening. And these people are counting on me. They're expecting me to show them the vision, how we're going to move forward in this city around policing. So I fail to see how these two positions are going to help. I just, I can't see it. I maybe can get there one day. I'm not there now, and I'm not going to be able to support this today. Thank you.
Councilmember Ellison.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to go ahead, and I believe the motion I made was on the items themselves, so I just wanted to clarify that I will move to discharge both items from POGO. And, and I'll just, for the public's sake, I'll explain why. We held these items in POGO for one cycle because I wanted to see a presentation, I wanted to see the chief do a little bit more engagement on these, on these items. And by the time we had our second POGO meeting, we had not yet had that presentation, we had it the very next day. And so because we had the presentation the very next day, I thought, you know, the request from POGO has been satisfied. We do not need to bring these back to POGO, and I believe that we're ready to vote on these items today, which is why I'm requesting that we discharge them.
Thank you, Councilmember Ellison. Councilmember Wonsley.
Thank you, President Jenkins. I just want to second what my, my chair, co-chair in POGO shared as well, in terms of some of the concerns that were originally raised about these positions. Kind of similar to Councilmember Vitale, I also wanted to have a presentation before voting on these items, which I'm actually, and I named this on Tuesday, been very surprised. Not actually surprised, but very happy that the chief has been more than willing to meet with us and do a presentation. We got a very comprehensive presentation on Tuesday, and that is, I think, a shift in what we've seen with his leadership. And also, you know, I really feel those sentiments because I said many similar things, wanting a comprehensive, concrete plan as well around, you know, departments, specifically the Office of Community Safety, when we were also thinking about appointing now Dr. Cedric Alexander. And none of those items were provided. We haven't had a meeting neither, and that got rubber stamped. So I'm really glad that we do have a leader, at least within MPD, that's somewhat receptive towards our calls for being more transparent, to have an outline of a vision, not making pinky promises with us about what they're going to do and what they intend to do, and really laid it out for us. So for those reasons, I will be supporting these positions today.
Thank you, Councilmember Wonsley. And to be clear, as Councilmember Ellison just clarified, this vote is to discharge from the Policy Government Oversight Committee. Seeing no further discussion, clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitale.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Payne.
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Shugtai.
Aye.
Vice President Palmasano.
Aye.
President Jenkins.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries, and those items have been discharged. Next, we will now, I will entertain a motion to approve the items, and I'll recognize Councilmember Ellison.
Thank you, Madam President. I will move to approve both items at once if, if the body is, is willing.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve both items or to vote on both items at once. Clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitale.
No.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Payne.
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Shugtai.
Aye.
Vice President Palmasano.
Aye.
President Jenkins.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries, and those items have been discharged. Next, we will now, I will entertain a motion to approve the items, and I'll recognize Councilmember Ellison.
Thank you, Madam President. I will move to approve both items at once if, if the body is, is willing.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve both items or to vote on both items at once. Clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitale.
No.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Payne.
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Shugtai.
Aye.
Vice President Palmasano.
Aye.
President Jenkins.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries. We will now close the public portion of our meeting and convene in closed session for the viewing public. I will note that the broadcast of this meeting will continue, and the council will reconvene in public after we have concluded the closed session. Thank you.